I can't really tell. See three.
Right now, I see Mr. Etherly, Mr. Saint Columbia. You, that gives us three is all right now.
Okay, so we'll wait. Judge Carter, good to see you.
Thank you, Mayor.
Recycle a bit of time. So the State of the Union, State of the Union, State of the City Address fell on March 31st and that was submitted on our website. And I wanted to announce that Mr. Monday on KJIW is going to broadcast that to Thursday, I believe. I apologize for not getting the exact times, but I told him I would. And my voice is raspy with the pollen in the air, so my apologies for my my voice tonight, but anyway, it'll be Thursday evening, I believe, and I'll try to see if I can find that. Here in a minute. It's a, my apologies to anybody who reads it or sits there. It's long. And I try to use my State of the City Addresses as kind of an annual report to document really more than anything else, just document what what we've been through as a city and and at least add my perspective to it. And this year was definitely a very interesting year, say the least. So it was not comprehensive, that we conclude everything, including Judge Carter, all the changes we're dealing with and positive changes over at the District Court and with the election and all. But but I hit the highlights and most would probably say I did too much, so apologies for anybody, but I do recommend it for anybody who's suffering from insomnia. That's for sure. So it looks like we have a quorum, right, Ms. Ramsey?
Yes, sir, we have four.
Okay, good. So I welcome everybody again. This is the City Council meeting, April 6, 2021. And Mayor Kevin Smith, this is the regular City Council meeting. And we want to welcome the Helen West Helen World and KJIW, any other media that might be present? And our guest, Sharon Compton and some, and Judge Car, and Judge Carr, who's kind of a guest and kind of in the guest, but we're pretty sexy. So Ms. Ramsey, go ahead and call the role.
Davis. Saint Columbia.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Mr. Saint Columbia.
Here.
Ms. Crockett. Mr. Franklin.
Over here.
Mr. Etherly.
Here.
Ms. Ford. We have three, four present and the mayor makes five.
So again, welcome to everybody and we're going to start with our guests and we always start with our district judge whenever we're honored with your presence. So Judge Carter, I'm going to recognize you if you
Thank you, Mayor. I appreciate that. Thank you, council members, for having me again. I came before you last time. I was asking for an increase on the base pay for the third, well, for the deputy clerk position. I mean, I guess it would be for all of them actually, but it was recommended by the mayor or the city attorney. I'm not sure which one, but I try to figure out the salaries from across the state and similar similarly situated areas. So I went to the municipal league. I got them to send me the salary survey for the populations. They kind of break it down into different groups. There's one that's population is 2,500, 10,000. Then there's one that's 10,000 to 20,000. So I got both of those because they're kind of in our in our area, what we're talking about here. The average salary for a deputy District Court Clerk, population 2,500 to 10,000 is $30,299, which works out to be about $14.56 an hour. The average salary population is 10,000 to 20,000, which is where Helen West Helen would fall, is $31,146, which works out to be around $14.97 an hour. Again, I was asking for $15 an hour, which is right there, you know, with the average salaries for that position across the state in similarly populated areas. You know, I'm asking for $15 an hour, that would be 31,200 with the way that the budget is for this office now. I think there's a lot more budgeted for the office than we're using now. The previous district clerk was making considerably more than my, the new, new district clerk, about $18,000 more. And so the money is there for what I'm asking to do and it wouldn't require any more from the city. And I think the position itself, you know, it deserves more than the minimum wage, which is right now what the base salary is. And, you know, I will put any suggestions that council members may have of how, what would be the best way to do this, but I really think that the base salary for for that position should be $15 an hour, and I'm asking the council for their consideration again on that matter.
I have, I like to help you out with it. The last time we talked, this is Councilman Franklin, the last time we talked, the mayor had said this is one of the most, this is the most poverty-stricken town in the state of Arkansas. And the salary, the going salary in Arkansas is 21,000, not mistaken. And here you are again, coming to us with a nice song without a dance, but my thing is this, the base pay as it is. Me personally, I, you could come tomorrow and you could come next week. The salary for me is what it is. I mean, these are new people and you also said about with the former clerk, the former clerk had been a clerk for years. She just didn't start out, the person that you brought, we don't know what her experience is or what she can do. Is she a nice dresser or whatever case maybe that she was hired for? My thing is this, we want qualified people. They have to, they have to earn their way up. I can't go into Hayes Big Star and want the manager's salary and I've been a cashier for the last five months. So it doesn't work that way. I mean, I'm glad you and America had these sidebar conversations and talked to all this, but me personally, the base pay is set in stone. These are new employees and they should follow the base pay. That's me. I'm just one vote and I will tell the people of the community the same thing. The elections has consequences. You won and you get to do whatever you would like to do. When it comes to the finances, it is what it is. They will have to abide by the base pay. Because when the, when the mayor was elected, his people, your people, my people have to follow the base pay ordinance. And I don't think it's fair to other employees that you would come here and ask us to give you, give these people some more raises. If you cut money, he, she, them or whoever have to go through the 90-day probationary period or the 120-day probationary period. I don't think it's fair to us as the council that you come back to us twice with a suggestion and I, and I personally have asked you to let, hire your people, let them work out the probationary period, then come back to us before we put somebody in a head start. The current salary that you went to the state and the mayor has already said that this is a poverty-stricken town. So hey, the mayor set the stage for that. So me, as a council member, I intend to, I'm going to follow that base pay ordinance and it will not change for me. You got other people to convince, but that's me, Chris Franklin, you heard it right here. So I yield back to whoever.
Thank you for your thoughts. Agree with you. I believe that we need to have qualified people in these positions. And my concern is to get a good qualified person for this position, you need to pay more than minimum wage. And, you know, you can go anywhere and get a job for minimum wage and this job requires more from somebody and, and there's lots of responsibilities for this job. And so that's why I think just the position itself deserves more than minimum wage, no matter who is in that position. I just think that that, that position deserves more than minimum wage. We do need qualified people. And I think to get qualified people, you have to pay.
Just releasing your audio a little bit is breaking up on us.
Can you also?
Let me say that we, we asked Judge Carter to go and look at what the pay was to the administrative office of the courts for these positions and look at what they were in the first initial district as well. And so that's, that's what he's reporting back to us tonight. Any other members of the City Council?
Eric, Joe, Saint Columbia. Mr. Mayor.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Go ahead.
I agree. I think that, you know, if you're going to employ people in positions important that that are as important as this position is, I think you're going to need qualified, competent, intelligent people for it and $15 an hour is, is, I think I think is what they need to have. If you're going to get good people, you're going to have to pay. And that's not, that's not a lot of money for this position. And looking at the standards of other cities in the community, that's why we trail behind so many places in the community, in the state is because we don't try to upgrade ourselves. We, we pay $15 for at the landfill for, I think we were paying that for truck drivers. You can get jobs, you can get jobs for a lot more than $15 an hour. I think if we're ever going to move forward, we need to pay the fiddler for the music. And I think that's where we're falling behind. I agree. I I just, to me, bickering over less than $15 for this position is silly to start with. So I'd like to make a motion if it's apropos at this time that we proceed in this manner and let this get behind us. We, we need good, competent, qualified people, and I think the judge has got someone for the job. And I think we need to pay them for it and they're going to, they'll probably earn more than $15 an hour, I'm sure, but we need to come forth and, and he's got it in the budget to do it with. We have the money to do it with. And if you're ever going to upgrade our system, we need to pay the $15. I make a motion that we move forward with this, Mr. Mayor.
You, you can't, you can't do it that way. And you can't do it that way because it requires a base pay amendment. And the base pay is in ordinance. And so you can't just do it by motion. There's going to have to be an amendment to the base pay ordinance. Just looking across my computer screen, you don't have enough people to, first of all, we don't have an ordinance, but you don't have enough people to suspend rules and adopt it at this point. So it's going to practically, I don't think there's any way that it can, it can happen right now. As I just count the, based on Mr. Franklin's comments, but I would say this, Joe, I don't, I consider it a bickering. I think there's always a financial issue involved. Just as a practical, practical reason, though, I cross this office just about every day or every other day. And I would say that there's absolutely a need to have that person there, to have an additional person there because the people in the office are just absolutely overworked and swamped at this point. That being the case, I could support it. However, I don't think the people in the office who are having to teach everybody else how to, how to do the work should go unnoticed. And I can do it if those people get some type of bump up, so to speak, because they're present, just to to be realistic and honest about what's happening, they're having to train the clerk. You know, the, the new clerk who he's proposing to bring in has never worked, she's worked in a clerk's office, but not a district court, so they're going to have to bring up speed on what happens in the district court office, clerk's office. But it's not workable as it is right now because there's more work than those two people can handle and also teach other people and so if there's some consideration given to those individuals, then I can support it.
I get, Mr. Ether, I kind of would go with you on it, but, but I want to say this. When Mr. Saint Columbia was saying qualified people, we have, we have qualified people, but when it comes to this is my whole thing. You said qualified people. You have two officers that are in that office right now who are not certified. If something was to happen in court, they can't, they can't apprehend anybody. So when you say qualified, what about the two officers that you got over there that are not qualified? To do nothing. Now you want to put them into a part-time two-class, but tell the people that you got two officers over there that are not qualified to do anything over there. And another thing is this, you know, when you had qualified people, you didn't even try to see what could they do? Before you, you didn't try to evaluate them. You just came in, just, hey, it's not what I want, which is your choice. But I would have better went along with, with this if you had to evaluate your, your people, as I've always said, evaluate the people that you have, see what, what they were, give them a 90-day window to work and see, and not go off somebody else's judgment of people. Because when, when you talked about the audit report, look at the, the paper quoted, the last city audit reported, it wasn't that nice either. So when you talk about audit reports and this and that, if it, look, look at it. And Joe, back to this, you said, let's talk about payroll. When we, when we get these people this money and we have to go back and make financial decisions to cut people and you want qualified people, yes, I want qualified people too, but look at the financial. Look, have you checked out to see how far, what, how much we have spent so far in the, in the budget? We almost, we at the, at the fourth month, we have not got how far we got alone in the budget with, with, with finances. Where are we at in finance? We haven't even got a report on where, how much we spent of this COVID money. So let's stop before we, let's see where we at, at the, at the first quarter before we try to give people this money. Because you got other people who want raises and other things like that.
Okay.
Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Just a point of order. Mr. Saint Columbia, since we don't have what we need to do a base pay ordinance, is it okay with you we move your, your motion to, we're planning on having a meeting, the next meeting about salaries where that might be an appropriate place to, to make that motion. Is that okay with you?
Yes, I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay, all right. Thank, thank you, Mr. Saint Columbia. Thank you, Mr. Valley. Go ahead.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Andre Vala, City Attorney. I think this was fun. Mr. Ether, well, Mr. Saint Columbia has withdrawn it. Mr. Turner previously had did this when the judge made the first appearance. And I think he submitted to you all the, the updated base payback back then. So I think you have a draft of it now. It was not before you on the table now, but that you have a draft of it. And just to correct for the record, one of the statements was Franklin made. Both of the offices that were hired are part of the police department and they have authority based on the chief of police and the mayor's authority under law. They are police officers on the roster with the police department, so they do have authority to act as police officers. And I just wanted to clear that up for the, for the public record.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. So it's a couple of points to clarify. The district court budget is under budget. It's, it's more than budget neutral. It's under budget. Because a series of rises were given in the fall for those that were existing staff. This car was elected, Judge Carter was elected and, and picked his own team and asked everyone to reapply for their positions at which time they were evaluated. And the the transition is one of the first transitions we've had in a long time and certainly since the state began the transitional process itself on district court. So we have to be mindful that our district court is also serving Phillips County and the state of Arkansas as well as the city. And it's not a very good situation and I wish the legislature would address it. But they haven't. And so in the meanwhile, we get in this sort of in-between situation with state and county and city that's different and and maybe someday there'll be a big enough outcry. I know the municipal league has been lobbying hard to get it resolved for years unsuccessfully, and I'm not exactly sure why. It hasn't been successful, to be honest, but but it's certainly clear to me that it should, should be. In the meantime, we're all partners in, in the district court issue. And it's no question in my mind that, you know, if you've ever had a call, as I have, from someone who had, had been given a speeding ticket, paid your ticket and got stopped six months later for driving on a suspended license for not paying the ticket, kept their receipt or was able to demonstrate that they paid it in order to get out of the ticket to driving on a suspended license and not paying a ticket. And that's an error that it might, maybe it's happens in a lot of district courts. But if it happens to you, you don't appreciate it very much. And so it's extremely important office and for people who aren't aware, district court is certainly one of the most important divisions that we have in local government and we want to make sure we have the best people we can possibly have operating it because that's where the final decision is made. They're on a lot of cases, not all cases, but on a, on a good percentage of cases. And it's important that we have a good, efficient and working district court and district court staff and to echo what Mr. Etherly said, they are operating one person one significant position absent and they're having to fill in those gaps. And as long as that's the case, that's, that's not going to be a good thing. So the other thing is we are judged planning on, well, we're going to discuss this at the end of the agenda, but we're talking about just putting all of this on the next agenda, April 13th to discuss department by department. And try to make sure the council has all the documents they need. So any documents you have regarding the salaries that you were just addressing, that you could forward to us, to forward to the council or however you want to do that would be, I think would be helpful for that meeting. Especially. But before we get off of this issue, are there any other questions for Judge Carter?
There, I just had a comment to make. I don't have a serious issue with the $15 for the deputy district clerk that's coming with here. But I do agree with Mr. Etherly as far as moving the other two people up. I hear that they've had some serious responsibilities over there and I just think they need to be compensated.
I just, this Davis. Any, any other questions or comments from the council? Judge Carter, you want to give me the last word? Like, I think we're losing your connection again, or at least I am.
Again, like.
Judge, 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 it could just be me because this is the first time.
I think it's me. How about, how about now?
Say that, say that again. I don't know if we got that.
I think it's me. Can you hear me now?
Yes.
All right. I just want to thank the council for the consideration. You know, I do echo Mr. Etherly. We need somebody in there. It's backed up bad. And, you know, as far as bumping up the other two, I'm open to that. They are working very hard, whatever makes it more comfortable for the council, I'm, I'm okay with. So I guess we'll talk about this next, next Tuesday.
Well, it'll be two weeks from today.
I thought you said the 13th.
Well, hold on. Miss, I do have the 13th on the possible date, 13th. On the next regular meeting, I'm sorry, I wasn't reading it correctly.
Okay, well, just.
We're going to discuss it at the end, at the end of the meeting.
All right. Just let me know. I appreciate it.
Thank, thank you, Judge Carter. We appreciate your time.
Have a good evening.
You too. Next on our, on our list of guests is Miss Sharon Compton Moore. At the last meeting, there was discussion about coming forward with a plan for parks recreation, which I thought was a great suggestion. Sharon Compton Moore is a native of Helen West Helen and has a lot of experience in this field. And Ms., Ms. Moore, are you on with us?
Yes, I am.
Having said that, I'm going to ask you to give us a brief overview of some things you presented this week. And it was really after the deadline for getting the kind of attachments out, but we, we're not going to do anything tonight particularly. So we can still get those attachments out to the council. But it would be a good opportunity to sort of introduce yourself or reintroduce yourself. Because I know you, you're from here and you know a lot of people here, so. And just maybe briefly touch on the highlights of your, of what you did for us at this point, anyway. This, this.
Okay, hello all. Good evening to you. So I am Sharon Crumton Moore, but I'm a resident of Helen West Helen. I've been there for years, growing up there. And I was brought back for some consulting services so we can get the parks and recs area back up and going. I have also already done some research on several grants that we can apply for. The deadlines for several of those grants are by the 30th of April. So we're, I've done several walkthroughs of the park areas, got to see where we are for assessments and things we would need to proceed to do some revitalization there. So that's kind of what I've been doing and, and working with the mayor and to kind of let him know where we, where we are and what we need to do to meet the grant qualifications. So we can be in the running for those. So that's what I've been doing at this point.
Ms. Crumton met with me. Was it yesterday?
Yes, yesterday. And I did submit a plan to kind of let you guys know what risks, factors there were, what the initial steps would be, the operations plan, our technical insecurity and our communications, things that we would want to do when we were talking about revitalizing the parks and getting that department. communications, things that we will want to do when we're talking about revitalizing the parks and getting that department going again. That's, that's it for me.
I think there were about four, maybe five grant deadlines that were pending or approaching that you felt like we were, I mean, there's never guaranteed, as we talked about, there's never a guarantee that you're going to get a grant. Only, the only guarantee is that you won't get it if you don't apply and and ask for it. So I know we discussed was a four or five, four to five, something like that grant opportunities we went over. Is that right?
That is correct. That is correct.
I mean, I don't really need to tell the city council because they, many of them are very involved in this and have been for years, but for our guest others, we have some real needs in terms of maintenance, in terms of updating the Washington Street Park, the North Helena Park, and a lot of other things. So one of the things we talked about was, or one of the goals was just trying to update our parks, the ones we have now and do the best we can at getting grant funding for those projects. The same thing would be basically a larger or longer term plan of where we want our parks recreation to be in, in our city for our youth particularly. And we talked about a lot of opportunities there going forward. And we do have, I guess, the other side of the coin of a lot of empty lots is that we do have we have, unfortunately or fortunately, we have multiple places that could become parks should the funding show up for those. And there are, and I could draw my own experience in the, in that field. I'd say that probably recreation and youth have more grants out there available than just about any other field. I don't know if that's true in terms of dollar value total because infrastructure projects take up a lot of money, but in terms of the number of grant opportunities, there's no question in the community recreation, youth programs sheet up there to the top really fast. And one of the things I had hoped to do earlier was to start taking more advantage of those grant opportunities. In the last year, we've had, of course, pandemic has forced the closing of federal, state parks and local parks. We're looking for now, instead of waiting until that day comes, but I hope it comes sooner rather than later. But we're looking now at how to best hit the ground running when, when we do open with some plans for funding. So that's all I'm going to say, but I'm going to open up for conversations or questions from the council. And I'm just going to let you all take.
Ms. Crumpton, how you doing? Ms. Crumpton, I, I, I thank you for wanting to be involved in the parks. Can I ask you a question? Because I'm trying to, I know some Crumpins are, are you related to Ms. Bobby Crumpton, the late Ms. Bobby Crumpton?
I'm my daughter.
Okay, so I, I, I know, I, I went to school with Kevin and my brother, my family is familiar with your family. I'm glad that you, you, you actually helped us with the park. How long have you been consulting with the city about the parks?
It's just been a couple of days. I actually with me and the mayor, but we have been talking about, just around about with some of my people at home about how we need to revitalize the city. And I was actually wanting to relocate back home. And so trying to see what we could do to kind of get that that revitalization back going for the entire city, but to found that there was an opportunity for Parks and Recs, then I was happy to jump on board to do that as well.
Thank you. And this is, this is the only thing I got. Ms. Crumpton, I, I, I welcome you to whatever, but the mayor said the bug stopped with him and this is my concern as mayor. I know Ms. Crumpton also said that she has some plans for security, but you do know this past weekend, the parks were open and we had people being shot and open. We can't provide safety for people in their cars or out in their yard. So what, what's your plan? Along with Ms. Crumpton has given us, if she's get the funding, what she can do. Right now, we had two people on the motorcycle accident shot. We, we hear gunshots all through, people kids being outside, just, just the other own. What is McDonald and Holly shooting was today, you know, people can't even come out when it gets warm. So mayor, you said the bug stopped with you. What is your plan to help with, with this collaboration with parks? Because if she's going to work on security, what are your plans? Not with her plans, what are your plans to help keep this until she get this implemented? How can you guarantee the public, they can go out to these parks now and be safe? We can't even go out in our yard. We can't drive. The business district on Plaza has been interrupted more than three times this year with, with gun, gunplay, gunfire. So the bug stops with you. There's no need me asking the police chief. You are the mayor and parks is a big thing, but even, even before Ms. Crumpton came along, I could take a look further back when Dragley Woodley was here. You said that they had put some money in to help out with that park on Washington Street to revitalize that area. Dragon Willie abruptly left. Nothing happened with the parks then. So Ms. Crumpton Moore is coming in to try to help you. How can we keep her when Dragon Willie pulled out and left and they were supposed to help with the Washington Street Park and all these other things? So mayor, again, this is to you to help Ms. Crumpton. What is your plan to keep us safe until she get her plan together?
Well, first of all, the parks are not reopened. And the police responded to those calls and dispersed the crowd. And we, so far, while crime is bad, crime actually went down here, violent crime and most property crime went down here last year. And it went down dramatically the year before. One of the reasons, because you would know that from the gunfire, because we have too many guns on the streets and we have too much gun activity on the streets. And there's no question about that. We've had some of the first arrests and the first convictions for random gun shootings in the last, in the last couple of years. Of course, and this is not exactly a news flash, but the pandemic changed everything. One of the things that changed was parks and recreation, youth programs in cities across the country and nationally violent crime went up because of that, or that's one reason. I'm very proud to say that the crime, according to the, the same reporting statistics that FBI uses, that crime went down is that same thing as saying that we don't have a crime problem. Not at all. We still do have a crime problem. We particularly have a serious gun crime problem with random shootings and too many guns on the street. That's the biggest problem we have. And the response I have to you is that the curfew, closing parks, all that actually probably contributed here to lowering violent crime last year. And we can't continue that in the future. And the best, the best, the best way we can deal with that is to be hyper vigilant when crowds are assembling in our parks and doing things that are against the law. And the biggest thing we can do of all is to make sure that people understand that they can't come to our city and do what they want and get away with it. That's been a problem here for a lot longer than I've been mayor. And, and that's about accountability. And I do think there have been a lot of strides made about showing, make sure that people do get held accountable. And trying to turn that image around that you can come to our city and do what you want and get away with it. You can't do that anymore. And, and that is part of the entire criminal justice system. It only starts with the city and, and making arrests. I think the addition of these guy cops will assist with that. They have the one mobile cop we've had so far has had tremendous results and response. I'm hoping that as we implement the rest of them, you'll see the same thing. Any other questions for Ms. Crumpton?
Last one for me. I would like to agree with you, but I don't know where you've been living in. I don't know if you've been living in Mars or somewhere. But the crime rate has not went there. Last year I was a victim of gun violence. Thank God I lived. I guess you must have forgotten that you had this campaign that the council was defunding the police department and crime was everywhere. I don't know if you've been asleep or had a drink or something, but you need to realize that against in your neighborhood, but I'm pretty sure you got a meth lab in your neighborhood. So I'm pretty sure you need to get that under control as well. But you have a lot of issues with the crime in this community. You don't act blind to the fact, and Ms. Crumpton, I, I, I'm glad that you came along. But the mayor, don't act blind to the fact and don't try to act like that this city, we have a high number of crimes. We're the number one city in Arkansas with crime, the highest crime rate. So don't, don't do that. Don't try to make yourself look good because right now this city is in ruin and needs help. And you had a whole campaign against this city council that we were trying to defund the police department when people that you wouldn't hire. That's how you came up with that $1.2 million. So don't play, don't, don't do that when you know that you want to look good. I don't want to look good. I want to tell the truth that this city is in ruin and we need help. And the leadership, it starts with even, even me. It starts with the leadership. Stop playing these games because no one is safe. People have, can't use the bathroom in peace where they got to get down on the floor. My neighborhood has been shot up more times this week, this week, and the weekend got started. We in day number three because Sunday is the first day of the week. We're day number three of shooting in my neighborhood and all over the community. So stop, stop playing. We've been, we've been had this. And the issue is this, that we stop playing politics and get real with what's going on in the city of Helena West Helena and start holding people accountable and get people who want to hold these people accountable and stop getting a slap on the wrist, then we can move forward. But don't do that. You know, as well as I know, and I'm not going to play the game. I want this city to be safe. Mr. Ethel had started a committee, a police committee to try to get the citizens involved and getting this community on the right track. Everything somebody does, you want to take leadership. We'll take leadership for, you said the bug stopped with you. Fix some of this crime. We got a gun problem. Have you talked to K. Punch out by suddenly folks, these guns? No, you have not. You want to be on the face of everything. Let's fix the problem so we can get industry here so we can work on our healthcare system and our school system. So we can get some industry here to take care of these people, to get people from being scared to sit out on their porch. The kids can't go in the front yard and play with this. All this fast driving and shooting going on, the elderly are scared. That's why people are starting leaving here at a record pace because we let people go. You, you, you don't fall through with nothing. And I'm, I'm, I'm going to get out there because that kind of pissed me that you would say that crime is there. You know, you know, Goodwill, ain't no crime been down. Through the pandemic, we still have problems. So stop, stop lying. Don't do that. Tell the truth that we need help in this city. You had, we had to call the state police here how many times last year? Don't play them kind of games. Tell people the truth.
I, I just did. Any other questions for Mr. Crumpton? About parks and recreation?
I, I have a question and this either directly to Ms. Crumpton or you, Mr. Mayor. What is the, I heard a lot about grants and so I'm assuming Ms. Crumpton has some experience in securing grants. And is there a written plan for the parks?
I want to partly answer that. And I'd say it's partly, it's partly a yes and partly a no. There's a, there's an initial, I would really call it more. And you're going to hear about this later with the water department, but more of a planned plan, but she has an impressive initial plan that she's done and she can will, like I said, we just met yesterday on that and it was really too late to get anything out and we're not making any decisions tonight anyway about it. It's just mainly an introduction and kind of a response to the city council's request for, I guess, some more thoughtful analysis of our parks and recreation situation, which I thought was a good suggestion. Anyway, Ms. Crumpton, you can send that out or send it to me and we can get it out to the council. And it's, it's a good first step is what I would call it. I wouldn't call it a comprehensive plan. But it's certainly a very good first step. You want to speak to that, Sharon?
Take it, take him out, take him out. Yes, so what I'm getting, we did come together with some steps that we're going to be involved in. I have not gotten a complete review of what we're going to do. So we will go more in depth as, as meetings continue to develop out. But I'll be glad to share what we have so far.
Okay, great. So get, get that to us in a PDF format. We'll make sure we get it out to the council. And anybody else who wants it, by the way. Other questions, Sharon?
How long do you think it'd be before you get that to the mayor? Because we didn't know you were going to be on the agenda until tonight. I would like to get it in time so we can, so I can try to support what you're doing. I do apologize that the mayor gets everything to the council the day of a meeting and we asked him not to do that. But I wish that you could get it to us sooner so we can look at it and so we can be better prepared to help you. Because we got this right before the, today about that you were going to be on the agenda. And I, and I think it does you a disservice for us not to know ahead of time of what you're trying to do. Because I look forward to working with you, but if the mayor could get stuff to us in a timely manner, we could better help you.
Any other members of the city council want to have any input or questions for Sharon? Okay. So Ms. Crumpton, do you want to have, you want to have any follow-up, final words before we move on?
I know somebody, I'm sorry, I don't remember the name, asked, had I had any experience with grant writing? Yes, I have. I actually wrote the advanced planning documents for the state of Arkansas for several millions of dollars. I funded the, I helped write the advanced planning documents for us to procure our new MIA system. That's what we do to process all our Medicaid claims. I have written several for the Arkansas, for the state of Arkansas on different governmental projects. So I'm very versed in grant writing and I just continue to hope I can help the city in which I'm from to prosper now.
Thank you very much, Ms. Crumpton. And we appreciate your attendance tonight. And any, and also I've got, I've got here completely pictures and I appreciate your hard work. Get that to me in an email PDF format and we'll try to get it out to the council either tonight or in the morning.
Will do.
And continue to follow through on that.
Okay.
Thank you. Thank you very much, Ms. Crumpton. Have a good evening. The next thing on the agenda is city attorney Andre Valley. Mr. Valley? Mr. Valley?
I'm sorry, my phone kept going back to mute. I'm sorry. Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to address the city council about, when I called Ms. Ramon today, I said two cases, but really they're like four or five cases. We previously, we previously did agreement with Mr. Harvard and Ms. Boyd relating to conflicts relating to my brother James Valley. And I thought that we were doing a contract relating to all conflicts. But when I met with them, they said, no, it was only relating to James Valley. And there there are three files that currently on my desk and Senator's office and two others that, that are processed and towards my office that I wanted to just address the city council about because the issue, I don't know whether they're going $5,000, but I don't think there's anything in the, in the budget for other conflicts. And so that's why I wanted to address that. The mayor has to personally contracts because I don't have a third contract. But there are some, some issues that they said beyond their contract. When I said they, I said Mr. Harvard and Ms. Boyd. They said they only contracted with the city of Helena James Valley. They didn't handle conflicts overall. And so the two or three files that were sent back to me from them. And then there are two more that, that I have not presented to them that came up recently. But, but we would need some, some budgeting for, for, for those so that I can give it to the mayor and the mayor can, we can go through the process of having someone to deal with conflicts for cases that's coming up.
Mr. Valley, what, I mean,
Um, Mr. Valley, what, I mean, would you want that in the motion or to, to, you want to start with $10,000 uh, to, to see what, what, for that, you want to start at 10, 7,500? Uh, what, what, I mean, I mean, which, I mean, you want it in form of a motion so I can go ahead and help you get this out the way?
That, that would be fine. I, I don't know exactly what, what it would be. I was trying to give one person or, or to one person handle all of them. So they won't be going back and forth to deal with it. But again, the way our, our, our ordinances read, I can't contract with anyone. Only the mayor can contract. Uh, and so, but one of the things about it is, is it's something that we have to get pushed, pushed through. Just like four or five different cases. Three of them have been rejected, two hadn't been presented and two are the most, two are very recent. Uh, but I just want, but we just need something appropriated. But $10,000 may be a good start. Uh, I don't know. Uh, I'm not suggesting that you pay the person $10,000. I was just saying that, that $10,000 may be a good start, Mr. Franklin.
Well, well, Mayor, well, I'd like to make a motion, I mean, just to, I mean, to see what this does. Your spending authorities with $5,000, if we could just use your spending authority until, and if we need to bump it up for, for that, we can if you let us know. But uh, I mean, I would like to uh, see that us uh, start off with at least, at least the mayor's spending authority. And if the mayor could uh, have a conversation with us if it goes a little farther than that, have a conversation with us in, in, in the, in timing to say, hey, listen, I think I'm gonna need to, need to come bring you all in because we, I can't do a serial contract, but I do want, think this may be a little bit more. I think then he could come back and tell us so we can, you know, address what's going on. But uh, Mayor, I would like to start at $5,000. No more than 10, but $5,000, which is just minimum limit to uh, a special prosecutor, what Mr. Valley is asking for.
Yes, and, and for the record, I don't know one second, but I want to say one thing, Mr. Franklin, there's money appropriated, but uh, considering the ongoing issue with the landfill, of most of that money, I was asking for this specific because I don't know what this, what, what's gonna happen with landfill. We are an appropriated money in case we have to sue related to land for issues that we addressed last year. Last year the city made some payments, uh, but we're waiting on other, other things at this, at this point. And so that's why I was asking for a specific preparation for that issue.
So, Mr. Valley, help me out a little bit. You needed, you need the council to approve a preparation.
Yeah, for, for conflict, for attorney fee for conflict council. The contract we have with Ms. Boyd and Mr. Halbert, they said they only deal with the cases involving James Valley. And that one specific conflict, we paid both of them per month for all the cases he has filed. He, he has at least a third of the docket uh, and uh, the money that we're paying for conflicts related to him is only, they said that was the only case that they are, that they are contracted and obligated to prosecute on behalf of the city. They said that anything else you need to have to pay them, actually, that in their contract or contract with someone else. And so I've been going back and forth trying to, and I'm trying not to let cases lapse and just trying to get those resolved. But the cases that I'm talking about all are clear conflicts for, for me.
All right. So you need, you need the, you're, you're asking the council to make a motion on a resolution to appropriate $5,000 each for and for independent prosecutors on two cases. Is that how you say that?
Well, it was two cases, but really it's, it's a total of five cases. When I went back and looked at my office, it's five cases. But uh, I wasn't asking for $25,000 tonight. Uh, but, but the motion that Mr. Franklin made is find appropriation for conflict cases. Uh, he said it between five or 10,000. I think we need to start so people can look at it. Some of the cases are simple and it may not take that much time, but a couple of cases may take some time.
So uh, Mr. Franklin's motion to approve up to the buyer's spending limit, no more than $10,000 for special prosecutor in the cases regarding the uh, otherwise with conflicts in the city attorney's office. Is that a proper?
Yes, that's, that's proper, Mayor. Yes, sir.
Okay. All right. So Mr. Franklin has moved, made that motion. Is that correct, Mr. Franklin? Did, did I state your motion correctly? I, I don't know if we've lost him or not.
I said yes.
Okay, we didn't hear you. You were on mute, I think. Okay, so Mr. Franklin moves that we appropriate up to 5,000, no more than 10,000. Let's just say between 5 and 10,000, let's just say 10,000 if we're doing appropriations because you still have to approve it inside of five anyway. So that's okay. We'll just say up to $10,000 for special prosecutors in the office of the city attorney for the cases. Uh, the city attorney is identified to have a conflict. Any changes to that motion? Did Mr. Etherly second that?
Yes.
Motion maybe been seconded. Any other discussion or comments? Okay, Ms. Ramsey, call the roll.
Mr. St. Columbia? Ms. Crockett? Ms. Ford? Mr. Etherly?
Yes.
Ms. Davis?
Yes.
Mr. Franklin?
Yes.
Mr. St. Columbia? Mayor Smith?
Yes.
Thank you. I have four yeses.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, city council.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Uh, if, if you don't have anything else, are we ready to move, move on? You got anything else for us?
Uh, no, sir. I have nothing else. That, that was the issue that was addressed.
Okay. All right. So the next uh, several issues and um, we'll start with the water department as the agenda is. So let me give you, try to give you a brief update. The well that went out at the Helena plant has been temporarily replaced pending a permanent replacement um, by the well service to challenge approved appropriations for earlier. Uh, it should be permanently completed soon. That allowed us to bring that well back online. We had a couple of issues with some pipes in the Helena side, the east side uh, that needed to be flushed from iron deposits that, that crept up in uh, at the end of some of those lines. And so they went out and flushed the uh, fire hydrants that took care of most of those problems, but we had some complaints um, about discoloration, which is primarily gonna be iron, which nobody wants to hear this, but, but it's actually not bad for you. It's even better for you. It just looks terrible, tastes terrible. So that's uh, that's, that's still important. Um, so that well is back online as it was before the snowstorm. So that's good, that's a good development and the uh, discoloration issue or any of those things should be resolved. So that's, that's one thing I wanted to report. Pretty much all of the items we've talked about and before are in progress. The valves at the Helena plant, which Valley need to be replaced, are in the process as we speak, being replaced. They have to literally torch off the old valves because they are rusted to uh, the facility to the point where you cannot use wrenches and all the rest of those things to undo the clamps. And so they're having to, they're having, they had to come back with torches uh, to literally replace the clamps and some of the valves um, that were so old and rusty. Um, that process is going on as we speak this week at the Helena plant. We also stopped some, we, we've done a lot more than you probably want to uh, sit through tonight, but but much like our crime situation, even though we've done a lot, there's still a long way to go. Uh, Mr. Jack Ross, who y'all know is our former water manager, um, made a report to me that I'll try to distribute as soon as I get a chance to talk to him with, about it. It's essentially an update of the plan that he submitted to the city back in, I want to say 2017. Um, it's a very good update minus the um, Helena sewer pond problems, which took up probably 60% of his first uh, briefing back in 2017. That situation, as I've reported before, has now been resolved completely with the help of funds from the Delta Regional Authority, the Arkansas Natural Resource Commission. That began before I became mayor, but we were able to get an additional, we were able to get additional funds from the DRA and the Natural Resource Commission to help us complete those ponds 100%. And I'm glad that part, that's obviously, obviously extremely important uh, uh, thing to announce. We also have the Hydramatic Booster Station online now, which is booster station for water pressure in a good section of South Helena, uh, Arkansas Street, Military Road and so forth. Um, that has since come online. Uh, on the other hand, we are still trying to get electricity to one of our stations in West Helena. We still have issues with our um, uh, with our filters in both plants that um, that we're working on in Helena diligently. We are trying to get prices on the West Helena filtration issue because that could be a lot more pricey and a lot more time consuming. And in terms of the plan to kind of move forward to that, that uh, Mr. Walland uh, was asked to do. He wanted me to let you know he was unable to make it tonight uh, due to a conflict. However, he um, is basically uh, trying to look at what um, uh, Mr. Ross did and some of the other things to get a better scope of work. Because if you were mentioned, if you remember or recall, we talked about a scope of work. And there are really kind of three phases here and I'll just quickly and I'll move on to questions. One is um, emergency level, things that could knock our system out. We've taken care, at least in, in the short term of the issues that can cause um, people to be without water. Some of the issues we've seen in the last year, let's put it that way. Uh, the more short term, short term things that we could address. Then there is um, there are bigger ticket items that could become short term problems any day now that have been a concern since, since before I was mayor. Um, but we didn't have the money to deal with them. And then now we do. And um, and so getting estimates for some of those big tickets and one of those things is the West Plant. Uh, basically the big pipes in the bottom of that plant uh, need to be uh, replaced. Uh, not just repaired. They've been repaired since something like the 1950s to the point where they can't really be repaired again or anymore. Uh, that's gonna be expensive. And so we're trying to get prices. It's not something you want to weigh bidding on. That takes some time, but that's sort of the second thing. Then the long term thing, which you were all very familiar with, is just our infrastructure system at large, our pipes, our um, delivery system for the, from the water plant. You have to have a good heart and that's your water plant. Then you have to have good arteries and veins and that's the rest of it. And our arteries and veins are in bad shape and, and it doesn't always make sense um, necessarily. Some of our older sections are actually in pretty good shape. Some of our newer sections are in really bad shape and they complete overalls and replacement. We just simply can't hardly keep patching in the longer it's that bad. So there's the process of analyzing that first, prioritizing it and then putting some realistic money numbers to that. And um, so Ken and I have spent some time talking about that third part of the process is gonna be much more um, not just more expensive, it's gonna take more time. Um, and it's, it's just gonna take bigger guns. I might, you know, it's gonna take um, it's gonna take all hands on deck and it's gonna take a lot of time. And uh, the only thing that what we have to do is what I've impressed on Ken and others is we have, we have to start that process. It might take a while, but we don't have an excuse for not beginning that process. So that's where we are. Um, he hopes he can be back at the next regular scheduled meeting with something more on the scope of work from the plan that you authorized at the last meeting. So I'm gonna take questions on those. And I, I will just add that we have, uh, continue to have, especially with the weather this year, um, you know, issues with water leaks and uh, we continue to have, and we're getting ready to have another storm. We always have backed up sewer uh, from the rainfall and flooding that occurs. Those are, those are continuing to be issues. The leaks, I would say we have made a tremendous amount of progress on. Uh, but like so much else, we still have a long, long way to go before we get there. So certainly room for criticism. Um, but at least in the case, um, two thirds of our water issues, the third being the last thing I mentioned, the arteries and the the, the capillaries. Um, I would say we have made tremendous amount of progress in the last few months and we're, we're getting there. All right, I'll be quiet. Any questions or comments?
Or comment. Thanks for the report, Mayor. Uh, do you have it in written form? Your report?
Uh, yes, Mr., well, Mr. Ross's report is in written form and Mr. Walland is working on that scope of work that we talked about.
Okay, but those updates that you just verbally uh, gave us, they, they're, they're included. Is that correct?
Uh, most of that is. I would say the, yes, ma'am. The, the leaks, that, well, the only thing wouldn't be, would be the uh, the flushing out of the pipes, the replacement of the pump. That's all happened since that report. But other than that, yes.
Thank you. I look forward to getting a copy.
Thank you. Other questions? Um, so again, it's a very daunting thing. And um, again, it's another issue that shouldn't, is no surprise to the council. Um, you know, the good news is, uh, as we recorded at the last special meeting on this is unlike 2017, unlike 2018, we have money now to help address these problems. What I've said in my State of the City address and, and elsewhere and otherwise is of course, you know, rate payers are paying more than they ever had. And while our rates are still in line with most cities in Arkansas now, uh, you know, at the same time, they see an increase in rates and they want to see, and they've had, and we all have, and I mean, we all live here. So we've all suffered. I certainly have along with everybody else. Um, problems with water and there's just no excuse for that. And uh, and there are other issues such as customer service, uh, issues with our phone systems and so forth that we're trying to address this week as well, uh, to try and have a better response system than I think we apparently have in terms of just customers calling in and, and trying to get answers to the questions. Um, they're paying more now. They deserve that level of uh, of, of service. And it's um, it's just in the nick of time in terms of some of our problems. Some of it was too late because we had, and on the other hand, we did, we did um, escape the kind of problems that Memphis had. Uh, the Spur, Greenville, Jackson, others in our area um, had even bigger problems. So that wouldn't have not happened without the kind of emergency management we had and without the fact that we'd raised those rates and that we now have money in our reserve to, to help with these problems. If we had not done that, it would be a totally different story. So I just want to make that clear. In some ways, although it may not be apparent, uh, our system is much better than it was before. So other questions or comments? All right. If there aren't any other uh, comments, questions about that, we'll move on to the street department. And I think um, Mr. Jones is on here with me. Mr. Jones, are you on here? Mr. Jones, are you on here? I'll get started, I think, you know, he was, um I haven't looked, say, to be honest, I think. Um or he may have some problems like the rest of us, but I'll get started on it and. And I'll just uh defer to him when he, when he can get on. Um in, in the State of the City address, I reported that in twenty twenty, we had successfully. Remade thirty properties. We still have, and we also planted a lot of empty lots um and so forth. The mowing ordinance, I think we were asked to have that. Have that ready, grass ordinance. Of course, uh now it springs here, all that is, is a big focus. We have, I think it was pointed out to me today, we have. Only seven people in the street department, whereas when the city first merged, there were fourteen people in the street department. So um. When you think about that, you know, as I've said many times, I've had to ask our department heads and our, our. Employees to do more with less and that's not easy, uh but they have certainly given it every, every. Everything they have to make that happen. Uh last year, I was for the most part pretty happy with considering the rains, people forget when it rains. We have a huge domain to mow, this year, the. It's my understanding that we're going to get some help uh from some other sources on our mowing uh part from um. The A and P Commission, Mr. Ethely and. And others, uh so it would, I'm hoping it will be more efficient, when it's constantly raining. It's almost impossible to keep up with uh. With all the grass issues that, that we do for the city, let alone all the empty lots that we mow. And then we charge the owners of those lots. It's a, and we have a lot of vacant lots, as you all know, so it's a daunting uh effort. The demolition, that's why I'm skipping ahead. Um Bobby, are you on yet? I'm not hearing him, so um. And I don't know if you want to discuss the, the grass ordinance, right? So I'll just open that up for questions and comments.
The, the grass, did I miss you? Did, did I miss you on the grass?
Well, I know that's something y'all wanted to bring up, so that's why.
Oh, okay, well, uh I, I want to say myself and Ms. Davis both received um. Some complaints about uh some, some lots in some areas. Uh particularly a complaint was made about the grass at um. West Side School and uh you know, keeping it cut, maintaining it, and so I thought at this time of the year, it might be appropriate for us just to, to issue a reminder. And uh I, I city code, this is an issue for code enforcement, but our city code. Uh has a section five point one, two point zero five, and that's just for anyone who may be listening to other recording. Uh that prohibits any owner, occupier or controller of land to. Allow grass weeds or any plant that is not cultivated to grow to a greater height than twelve inches. On an average of an individual lot tract parcel or to grow and rank fusion upon the premises and so. Um basically what we're asking on behalf of our constituents is that, uh you know. We enforce the uh, the grass cutting, I know that's a big job and so I'm not, I don't, I don't want to make it seem like it's, it's a, it's a small undertaking. Uh but to the extent that we can, in particular since we, we have some complaints about, uh you know. Certain properties that we try to address and get the owners to, to maintain those lots.
Mr. Valley, you still on here?
Yes, sir, I am.
Um, yes, sir, I am. Can you kind of walk through the process once we cite somebody for a, a gra, an empty lot? And also the cleanup and the other things that kind of, we're, we're really, even though we're made down into code, it's very similar.
Well, one of the things about this file squared within the code enforcement and uh the street sanitation department. Code enforcement is supposed to send them a letter of, of some notice and find out who the homeowner is, if. You know, bring them to, to district court so that they can stand before the judge and, and respond. And the, I've met with Mr. Jones as well as the code enforcement officers in the past. Informed them that, for instance, uh Mr. Jones, the sanitation department is supposed to keep up with details as to how, how. How many man hours did we spend, what did we actually spend, how many employees were there? Uh how long did it take and so we can properly bill them and document them for what we're doing so that we can recoup. And that's one of the things that I talked to Mr. Jones about yesterday as well. And he said he's aware of it, uh he, he was waiting on code enforcement. So we can begin the process, we can do it properly because he's waiting on notices from code enforcement of lots. So that in years past, what happened is we would cut the lots and then would never send them a bill, cut the lots, never send a bill. And so uh what Mr. Jones, I talked about, we've been getting the cart before, before the horse. When we, we got to get them the notice so we can document and do all that. Issue citations, let's go forward, let's be aggressive because we're going to have grass going, but after citations issued. It comes to district court, when it comes to district court, uh what happens, yeah, the judge will give them opportunity to clean it up or find them. And another thing that we can do is if we don't want to go that process, uh when the city goes in for absentee ownership. Uh they're again supposed to document what all they're doing on the property, so that once they document what we're doing. Uh then they can get it to me and we can send them a notice of a hearing and have a hearing before the city council said, and, and where we detail. What we did, how long it took and we'll be asking them to, the city council to do a lien against the property. Uh I'm, I'm fast tracking this, but the lien against the property, what would happen is. Uh city council was certified that the, that they agree with the city department. So that we go through the process of a lien, then I see the attorney will draft a lien document to, to file on the property for them. Uh when they pay their taxes the following year, they were, we were recouping. Uh the monies that we, that we paid, if we do that, then you're doing all the cutting and keeping it up the whole time with confidence and the notices. So at the end of the season, we can just do one hearing, one payment and et cetera. Uh but it's, there's several different ways we could approach it, I, I hope that I answered your question, if that creates any further questions, please ask.
Yeah, and that was really good, any questions for Mr. Valley?
No question, but just a comment and um that is, and I'm actually looking in, in the, in the code book. Uh five point one, two point zero four, also authorizes uh enforcement. Uh within three years uh by asking in circuit court and so um. We have some remedies available and I, I understand Mr. Valley's office may be.
Well, it's not that, but the part of this, I would need the documentation from the sanitation and the street department. Because if you're aware of where's, that's attorney, I can't just sue and say you owe me, I gotta have a document showing what we spent. And so it all starts with that documentation, the coordination between the code enforcement and the street sanitation department. But I agree with you, the, the ordinance does say that, that the final remedy that I can bypass it all and sue for all the, the past monies. We would have to have some documentation to support it and to go, go from there. And so I did meet with, with the zone about getting that documentation, we both had. He said going forward, he would, he would make sure that we do that, that was last year. And but now we're at the cutting season where we can begin to do it, so we're at the very beginning of it. And uh I'm keen that we're, of it, and I hope, hopefully we can work with Mr. Jones. And both our code enforcement officers to get the documentation so we can go forward. Did that create any other questions for anyone?
What are properties that have been sitting for more than three years and nothing's been done?
Um it would depend on which, which situation you, you're talking about, some of them we've condemned and you hadn't had the manpower to go ahead and do them. At one point during Mayor Hollowell's administration, we talked about. Uh purchasing the track hole to be used between the landfill and the city and, and purchasing the, the. Person that was supposed to help uh to curtail part issue, uh so some of it is. Some of it was that and some of it, at, at this point, it's simply, they're having to be on. Uh this past two years, I think we haven't condemned many properties, but uh. Late last year, we could be on probably seven, eight properties, uh but they're, they're in line behind those previously condemned that haven't been torn down. Uh so Ms. Halbert had gotten a list to Mr. Jones and to me and Mayor. And she detailed, here the ones that could be on, and he, he actually, I think she gave it to the city council. And some of those are in line to be torn down, part of it is, it's best to tear those down during the, the summer months and et cetera, when, when it's easy to tear down without raining. And et cetera, and so hopefully the mayor, Mr. Jones coordinated a lot of that and, and the code enforcement officers this year. Uh does that create any further question for anyone or what's the response to your question, um Mrs. Davis?
No, I didn't really answer.
Okay.
But we, we, we'll discuss it.
Okay, what, what specific issue question, you said what happened with, I'm trying to understand what you're asking, because you said what happened with the property that is still standing.
No, 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 I mean that, that the city hasn't. Had any manpower on the property or done anything with the property. Not saying that it's the fault or responsibility, I mean that, that's, that's been sitting there for like three or four years.
Okay, well, those that haven't been condemned, but when I met with uh, uh Mr. Williams and Mr. Uh excuse me, Mr. Gant, what I asked them to do was to go by and drive to the neighborhoods to see exactly. Okay, what properties have, are on the condition of this list, what properties are not, and those that's not, let's start working together to try and get them on the condition of this. So we can move forward and do those. Uh part of the issue is you have a very large inventory that's already on the condition of this. That uh the mayor, Mr. Jones and the code enforcement officers want to work through as we worked on the process. But the thing I've emphasized for both the code enforcement officers is while we're doing that, uh we still need to be working on new properties. Now, in addition, the grass creates another issue because it's one of those things from a manpower issue. If they're cutting grass, they're not tearing down buildings, if they're cutting, tearing down buildings, they're not cutting grass. So those are some practical issues that we have to work through and as I've suggested to every mayor, one of the things that really helped. Uh during years past was we, during the summer, we. We typically hired part-time people for a, a time period, I forget how many weeks it were, but previous best pay ordinances. Had those people in it and what would happen is they would help with the cutting of the lots. So we could focus during the summer months on tearing down the buildings. And I still think that's a good model, I think that's something that still will work, but it's one of those things we have to look at from a, from a standpoint. And if you choose to do so, uh that's one of the things you have to think about before giving out raises and et cetera, because you're going to need those funds for part-time employees to, to do so. Uh so it's a manpower issue in part, I'm not the mayor, the mayor probably is saying it better you about manpower issue. But typically addressed the manpower issue during the summer months, when we're trying to go at this grass, we do those for part-time employees and. Your skilled employees that you already have would go towards the tearing down the building.
We did put in money this year during um the budget season to. Contract some people.
Alright, okay.
And, and, and uh do demolition, demolition.
Okay.
If, if it's, if there's no objection, we're, I'm just going to kind of merge this with the code department discussion since we're kind of talking about it already, if that's okay, y'all. Um uh Ms. Davis, yeah, that's right, you, you did do that and today we had a discussion about, well. Let me say, we also advertised this morning for the third code officer, officer position. Um that's opened up now. The um demolition, to go back to that, um we got a proposal today. And Mr. Jones and I did meet about pretty much everything we've been talking about this morning. Um and if he's gotten back on here yet, um he can, he can feel free to chime in here, but. And we've agreed to move forward on some of the properties that, that have been condemned and some that where people are paying us. Uh an amount that's been agreed upon to tear them down. And I'm going to say that I struggle. And I want to say this publicly because I want to invite uh. Any, anybody that might know, uh who might be listening. We, we really struggle with, with having an adequate number of vendors. The, the ones that we do have are very good, I don't have any problems with them at all, it's just that they're very busy and um. You know, um you only have so many warm, dry uh days of the year. And these properties have to be, all the, you know, the Kelly Apartments, I still call them Kelly Apartments over on. Porter that you see when you get close to the light. You can see there, we, we, uh finally the estate was settled in favor of the. Wife and the son of the man who passed away, who owned them back when y'all uh. Agreed, decided to burn down the one apartment building, he died and it kind of held up, that's finally been resolved. Mr. Gant, I believe, worked with him on a price uh to tear down the two external buildings. We started the process, do you see that that got started and then it turned out the electricity and gas lines inside the apartments had still not been turned, been turned off. Even though we were told that they had been, so we had to stop, now they have now since then been turned off. And we're trying to resume the deconstruction of that, the cleanup costs are where we really struggle the most as a city. A lot of these structures are, are halfway knocked down or burned down already, the. That, that's, that's kind of the fun part, knocking it the rest of the way down, I mean, I should say, but it's, it's the easy part, I guess I should say, not the fun part. Um it's the cleanup, it's putting it, it's cleaning up the, the spot so that, you know. It doesn't look like, uh like that anymore is, is probably the most challenging thing. And I'll tell you what, some of our code officers have said to me and others that we needed three wheel. A three axle, sorry, three axle dump truck and a front-end loader to adequately just go boom, 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 like people really would like to see it done. Um in order to clean these sites up adequately, that, that's expensive equipment. I thought we were going to have a source to purchase that equipment, but we didn't, we, we lost that source or that source, source never did materialize. Um so the best use of that demolition money. Could be just the cleanup part, because that's the part we still struggle with and the money might go further too, because we can get them knocked down. Is to clean up and removal, that's the tough part. I'm not sure if that answered your question, but we did meet about that today and we did approve one. Vendor to move forward on about, well, one at a time. And also are ready to move forward on Kelly Apartments. And a few other structures around town. On the lots, I've personally called some of the people that I can find anyway and um asked them if they would pay. Certain amounts for us to, to mow them so that there wouldn't be eyesore and. To my knowledge, those things, you know, they've been, been paid and most of, most of the ones I get a hold of, that's the problem, is getting a hold of the plan owner. But uh they're pretty amenable to that, really. And I hesitate to talk too much about this, but I mean, period, but, but anything, but the. Software, what I think I hear you saying, which I think is a dead-on concern. Is, you know, you've got this list that Mr. Valley alluded to, we have a software program that the city paid for some time ago. We're not really adequately using it and I don't really think we've adequately used it since Dallas Smith left. And even then, we weren't using all the functions of that, but what you have the ability to do if we have the. The uh. Not, not laptop, well laptops or notebooks is to go into field, search the property. notebooks, is to go into field, search the property, send the letter, put a status report on that property. So they they're, this is where they are in that process. Um they've paid us or they've agreed to pay us. They have paid us. So that at any moment, if you were to ask me or a code officer, what about, you know, one thirty-five Waverly Wood Drive, where is it? Then a code officer or a street department or me should be able to pull that up on that software and say one thirty-five Waverly Wood is at this point in the process. At the end of the stage is when Mr. Valley gets it, if nothing else has worked. And we've documented and done all that all the way along the line, then he can easily take that file and go to court. The thing is, we're not using that software and like we should, and we don't really have the hardware to go out in the field either. So as we advertise for this third person, we're also looking at it and that 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 laptop or whatever has to be connected to cellular service so that you can get, you know, in the field uh internet. And so we've been talking to AT&T about that. Uh so that it's compatible with that software. But in in my feeling is the software is there, you provided the tools for that. Um we're not really adequately using it like we should. So I'm hoping once we get this third person on board, it would be a good time to have that training, to have those laptops to be able to answer your questions a lot better than I think we've done tonight. We've done a lot of um empty lots, a lot of demolition, a lot of cleanup. And, you know, this is gonna sound like a a broken record, but it's just, it's true about almost everything. Just about everything in our city, which is that there are a lot of issues. Um we made a lot of progress, but there is just so much of it. It's just frankly overwhelming. And if you have time to drive up and down the streets, you know, it doesn't take long to see that and um and I commend our craze for doing a lot more than has been done in many, many, many years. It's just, it's not nearly enough. I mean, even if you look at the number of houses that are added to it every year and you subtract that from how many we've torn down and cleaned up, it's even a lot, it's 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 even more uh daunting, so. I'm trying to make sure I've answered. I'm sure I over answered it. So I'll be quiet.
Thank you.
The demolition that you put in the budget is helping. If anybody there there's no, there's no preferred vendor or anything like that. We just need vendors who can work. And have the right equipment and the right insurance and all that stuff you have to have, but um that that would help tremendously. Speed things up. He, I guess I'll just take the question. Mr. Valley, you want to add anything to what I just said?
No, I think your statement was were accurate and uh uh the 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 software and the utilization of software would would really help. I know you have the software, but the hardware to go with the software and the and the AT&T uh internet usage uh would would really help. Because the more detailed information I can get, the easier it is to to go forward to 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 sue or to get lanes and et cetera. And that's what that's why it's not that the work is not doing being done, but we're we're not receiving compensation for what we've done in a larger manner. Uh some people are paying upfront and that's consistent, that people pay upfront and those things happen. But a lot of the absentee owners are absentee and then are doing it. And that's the problem every city has was absentee ownership. And once we're able to get the lanes and bring bring suits, then that that would be a lot better.
And I and I think that getting back to the accountability issue. Um and I I remember when we sent out letters, not long after I became mayor, Dallas sent out some letters to properties to notify them to get the clock running on the ordinance and five of those properties burned down further that weekend, our fire department had to respond to. They were already burned. They were already burned. Um but five of the properties that we sent letters to burned again because they didn't, I think, because they didn't want to pay demolition cost. Maybe that's too cynical of me, but that's what my fire department thought at the time. Also, it's kind of ironic that first of all, having five in a weekend is even for us is pretty high. But for them to be five that just happened to get letters stating that they were going to have to pay for the demolition and cleanup costs just seemed to be uh a little bit too convenient. So, you know, it's anyway, so that yeah, I'm gonna say again, kind of like I I would say in crime. It doesn't mean we don't have a problem. We have severe problems. Anybody with eyes can see that or ears in some cases. But um we have made a lot of progress, but we we can, I think, do better with that software with the third uh county enforcement officer, so. And we also talked today, going back to something Mr. Valley said, um we have the truck running. The problem with the um track hole was not the track hole. It was it was moving the track hole. You can't just drive it down the street like you can a a um another vehicle, another machine or equipment like a backhoe. You have to put it loaded on a truck and then you have drive the truck somewhere and unload it. The truck and the trailer that we loaded it on, which is at the landfill was in trouble, was wasn't working correctly. So we've got it back up and running. Apparently, I was told today and we'll be able to use that. Uh and also, we've been busy with the sale out there that's kept that um track hole busy. Um so now both things have happened, you know, simultaneously. We've gotten the truck, the trailer ready to go so that we can move it around town and we can also refrain up the uh the track, which is a lot more effective because there are a lot of nails and things like that that puncture tires and do damage to this equipment, so. Um so that's going to help on our equipment end substantially. Well, I'm just talking too much. My apologies. Any questions or comments on any of those things? And I'm just, I'm gonna include in straight and code really same time. And then Okay, the last thing on the agenda is incentives. This is just really to for discussion, get input. And also, Mr. Valley, your input especially. Um so we have more vaccine now than than we have ever had, along with the rest of the state and the country. Um and the question is um the question is, do we, um I'm sorry, not the last item, last item before Don has something. Anyway, is incentives to get our employees fully vaccinated. And we have played around with some ideas. It's just, and and this would be, this would be for anybody who has already gotten vaccinated, not just those who haven't yet. Um but uh things like gift cards and and uh time off and that sort of thing. I just really wanted to open that up for discussion because uh you know, it's it just, for one thing, it could be an item that's over five thousand dollars if it's a gift card. Um then there are there are other issues. So but I do think that the best way to, you know, I don't have to tell you how important it is to get vaccinated. We have a lot of opportunities now to get vaccinated. It's opened up to everyone sixteen and over. So literally, everybody age sixteen and over can go get vaccinated. We have more clinics. We have some more clinics about to come. Um we're doing a very big public push. If you haven't already seen it, we're we're trying very hard to get people, local people, to talk about the safety or or how important it is to get vaccinated. Um so on our own city employees, and we're just talking about city employees, but that's a big chunk of folks. Um we've had real success with our first responders uh who already went when they first became eligible. Um and we've had some successes in some in the water department, some other areas, but we're not at all what you would say is herd immunity level. So anyway, what what's your thoughts on that? Mr. Valley, I want to bring you into it too.
Well.
Some places are going um time off, um vacation day, free vacation day. Some people are going added uh hours to their, I guess, kind of like overtime hours or four hours here, four hours there in pay. So it is very important.
Well, I I I think the thing about uh uh thank you, Ms. Davis. I'm sorry. Go ahead. Go ahead and finish what you were saying.
Done. Go ahead.
I think the thing is, the the fine line between the city being able to give gifts and because the constitution prefaces us from being able to give gifts. However, uh the the this the city can, the city has the right to declare uh like holidays and clear days off and et cetera. And uh and so Ms. 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 Davis's uh statement about giving a day off or something like that, uh that may be something more in line, an extra vacation day. Uh as an incentive, that that may be something that you're ready to do for the gift cards. I don't I don't think we're able to do, and I don't think we'll be able to do uh extra overtime and so, but we may be able to be of a a vacation day or something like that.
Any any other comment, comments or input? Well, you know, our city employees have um unusual responsibilities when it comes to dealing with the public that a lot of people don't have, not unlike teachers and and others. But um so it's it is important for a lot of reasons for their for themselves primarily, also their colleagues. And then, of course, the public they interact with and their own families. So I do think when you get a city employee or a teacher or any public person who's with the public, serves the public, um vaccinated is is just one person, you're kind of helping provide immunity for a lot of people, so. Mr. Valley, would you mind getting with Lee and see if they've had any discussions about this kind of stuff? Just
Yes, sir. I do not mind. I I was trying to, because it was just presented to me now. I was trying to think through uh exactly how we how we do it, along the lines of what I suggested earlier. Uh just like the county has, county has far more vacation days than we have. It's up to the city councils to have a vacation day. So if you're looking at vacation days, you probably can establish. So I'm on a temporary basis for this this year, the vacation days, we're adding this minute to your vacation days. And not necessarily a holiday like the county. I I know I just co-mingled two things, but uh given an employee extra vacation day for one year, that that may be something that's an incentive that that you can get an extra vacation day if you if you do this. And and that's neutral for for everyone. Uh and they would have to uh likely would have to bring a a a card. Uh it's proof to to receive whatever their incentive would be. And uh once they have done that, then they then it's a matter of HR adding those days. Uh but I don't know if you if you want to do one day, two day, how how many days you're doing, uh because you're trying to emphasize people getting it done. And uh it's it's neutral to every employee that's just to take the vaccination. Uh it's it's not discriminatory in the manner. So I think that that would be a solution, but I will give Mr. Lee, uh mayor, to answer your question most succinctly.
And just in case there's some other cities that approach this or there's any other guidance that we need and um but yeah, and you might get a point that have to, you know, that including those have already been vaccinated. I mean, I don't think it's fair to offer something to to people that, just to people who haven't got it yet, but they would have to show their their vaccination card um to demonstrate that they've been vaccinated, I think, whatever it turns out to be. So anyway, yeah, if you don't mind shooting an email over there to John or somebody and another busy, but
Yeah, I I'll do I'll do that. I'll do that tonight. I'll do it because there's some other issues that need to ask some questions about the latency employee matter that brought my attention by one of the one of the department.
Thank you, Mr. Valley. Any anything else on that before we go move on?
No, sir.
Okay, thank y'all. And uh and now um pretty much done with my report, but Mr. Etherley, I recognize you for discussion on uh inclement weather payments.
Yeah, I I discussed um an inclement weather policy that 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 um expands to allow for additional days for payment when the uh the city and department um substance situation like we did back in February, but I I went to work on a resolution and I'll tell you what happened since the last meeting, the reason why I didn't present it. I need to change it because something else happened uh this last period and there's the computers were down um on the shut-off day. And so uh um they could not even pull up accounts on that day. And I said, well, this since this is right in front of me, maybe perhaps we should address that also. And so I'm going to redraft my my resolution and I'll just send it and ask it to be placed on the next agenda. So it encompasses any situation that may occur uh when the department is either, but in in the the effect of that, by the way, was that they couldn't accept payment if you didn't have your statement and we're not able to present it to them because they didn't know what to tell you. Uh they also, I just asked a question. I said, I guess that means nobody will be getting cut off today uh until or until the system is restored. And this, so yeah, that's correct, but uh just so we we include that in the policy, just about any situation where you can't make payment uh should be included in terms of extending the the due date for for our customers. So I'll redraft it and I ask that it be put on the next agenda. And I'll email it out to everyone uh in its final version and uh ask for consideration of it at the next meeting.
Great. Thank thank you, Mr. Etherley. Thank you for working on that, that issue. Appreciate it. And we'll get it on the next agenda. Um so let's talk about the next agenda. Um that's the last thing on the agenda tonight is to discuss. We've talked, we've had several discussions about salary uh raises and adjustments and we agreed that we were going to go department by department. Um and kind of talking amongst ourselves about that, we thought it might be worthy so that we can make sure that the council members have everything they they need, basically. Um instead of asking for information uh that that everybody has what they need, is to just make, and also instead of spreading it out uh over, you know, multiple meetings, if we have the next meeting just about salaries and of course, we'll have other issues like the one Don just mentioned, but um but primarily focus on salaries to try and limit the agenda uh mostly to that. And um and so and then make sure that you know, the budget and the the approved budget, the proposals, proposed increases, the anybody's pay amendments and all the rest of that can be in front of you all at the same time and discussed. And we can still do it department by department, but instead of doing it one meeting over several months, because we're already at the end of the the first uh quarter to uh and we may not get it done in one meeting. I'm not, I'm not saying, I'm not saying that we will. But at least sort of set it up that way so that um because we we might also make more progress than we think. So anyway, I'm just throwing that out there. What do y'all think about that? Basically, the idea is to the next rotor meeting to to make sure you have all the documents and plenty of time to review them and also ask questions in advance of meeting if you have any. And uh and just try to devote most of the meeting to to the recommendations in all the departments starting at the time and working through.
Is this going to be a regular meeting or a budget workshop or? What mayor?
Well, it says on your April thirteenth, it could also be, I mean, it could also be a regular meeting. I mean, I guess it's a conversation also. And I I don't see why it couldn't be a regular meeting. And I, I don't see why it couldn't be a regular meeting. If we move some of the action items like Mr. Etherley said, you know, that we're probably is not going to take much time. We can move to the top. And kind of dispense with that quickly, then we can just settle in on. On the rest of it and. Just see how much progress we make would be my suggestion.
It doesn't make many difference. I mean, would, would have.
Any other comments, members of the council or administration?
I prefer a budget workshop, but you know, whatever the council. The Georgia rules.
Anybody else? Can I, could I suggest sort of both? If we. See how, see how the regular meeting goes, see if we, see how far we get. And then where we leave off, we set maybe a, a budget workshop instead of waiting two more weeks. And. And just see how far we go. We don't have, we don't have to stay up all night and do it or anything like that. Just. And if, and if it's a, if it's a bust, if it's a bust, then we, we can still have a work, a workshop. But that's kind of doing both ways. We don't have a whole lot of things on the agenda. That I can think of for two weeks from now. If that's the next regular meeting. But, so I mean, I, I think if we, if we put the action items that we kind of know about in advance, which is the only one I know of would be what Mr. Etherley was just talking about. There might be some I'm not thinking about. Like this incentive issue. Or. That's really all I can think of right now, but. We could, we can get to it pretty fast, I think. Any, any other comments or questions or input? So the, so the next regular meeting is on April the 20th. So if, if there's no objection, why don't we try that? See what happens? Because right now we don't have a whole lot of business anyway. So. If, if we put. And maybe if that changes, we can change and still do a workshop. So we can schedule that anytime really. And we'll go ahead and start with those action items and, and then start with reviewing the budget by. Department by department. And then we can make sure, the big thing to me is to make sure everybody's on the same page, everybody has the information they have. So that when we do go over it, everybody is looking at the same thing. That's probably my biggest thing. Because, you know, we just side time that way. If there's no objection, then I guess we'll go ahead and, and do that and we'll see how we do. This Davis, and if we need to follow up the next night for another workshop or if this agenda gets too long to realistically be able to do that. Then we can still set a workshop. So I, I have a feeling we're going to have a workshop in our future anyway. So. But it might be worth trying to get this done during our regular meeting right now because we just don't have a lot of, we don't have a lot of business items for this next meeting. Any other council members have any questions, comments? All right. So. In this, this is our agenda. If there is no other business come forward, council, is there a motion to adjourn?
I'll move.
Sure. Etherley moves German as her second. They want to say it.
Say.
This type of section, no objection means adjourn. Thank y'all very much and y'all have a good evening.